The regular scheduled meeting of Rocky Mountain City Council here on March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. This time I'd like to welcome Keith Rogers, his first official meeting as our new city manager. Welcome Keith and thank you for coming. We're excited to have you here and the many great things that we anticipate that you're going to do here in the great city of Rocky Mountain. With that, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Peter Barney for his tenure as interim city manager here. If you don't recognize him, he is the guy with the biggest smile in the room. So thank you Peter for your service to our community and your excellent commitment. With that time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand in a circle for a moment of prayer. This time I'd ask our city clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
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 Okay, we have the forum. With that, I'd like to add number four, so consideration of minutes in the special called committee of the whole meeting, which was held November twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two. We reviewed the audit from two thousand and twenty-two and the gas adjustment presentation. I'd like to request a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Settle it.
Motion made by Councilman Harris, seconded by Councilman Javaris Walker. Any need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. For this time, we'd like to ask our superior, retired superior to our judge, Dr. Quinty Summer, please come and swear in our new manager, Keith Rogers.
Do you, Keith Rogers, do you mean to solemn swear that you support, maintain the Constitution, the laws of the United States, the constitutional laws of the state of Colorado, not inconsistent there with? That you thank for discharge, the new city manager, the city of Rocky Mountain, our new president?
Okay, this time I'd like to ask, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda that has currently published? Yes, sir, Councilor Joyner.
Not an addition, but want to thank the staff and assistant city manager, Elton Daniels, for doing a phenomenal job in supporting back in our interest city management. Mr. Peter Barney, they have brought us to this great opportunity that we're in. And we're looking forward to be, looking forward for one more opportunity to continue to grow. And thank you so much for the staff and team of Rocky Mountain.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other deletions or additions to the minutes or to the agenda as published? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right on. This time I will turn the mic over to our new city manager, official city manager, Keith Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited this evening to present my first community update at this Monday, March thirteenth council meeting. First item, the experience downtown Rocky Mountain newsletter is available. The first edition was emailed to residents earlier on today, and for now, the plan is called for this newsletter to be presented quarterly. Our debut edition features a survey asking residents what they would like to see more of in downtown, as that is very important to us. Also, information regarding First Fridays, which is a monthly celebration that kicks off on May fifth. Also, details on a few new downtown businesses and much, much more that you'll see in the newsletter. Additionally, I would like to highlight Women's History Month for the month of March, and the city will proudly recognize the following women this month. The five women who previously served on the Rocky Mountain City Council, the Honorable Linda Holmes, Helen P. Gay, Chris Carroll Miller, Angela Bryant, and Louise Blackett. And also, the four women who currently lead Rocky Mountain City Departments, our city clerk, Kimberly Vats, our business and collection services director, Latasha Hall, our human resources director, Kena Colfield Jones, as well as our community development director, Cornelius McGee. And finally, the Motown Review takes place on Friday at the Imperial Center, and this event is open for ages twenty-one and up and will feature Motown's Greatest Hits compilation, with an audience to choose the winning acts. So there will be a reception from five-thirty to six-thirty, and showtime is at seven P. M. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager. Yes, Councilor.
Also add Saturday, the Rocky Mountain Crew's apartment, and the fire department will play a charity basketball game at now Central High School at four P. M., correct? Alright.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there any other questions or inquiries or comments for the manager? Yes, sir, Councilor TJ Walker.
Just one correction, Mayor. I knew city manager, I'm sure he wouldn't know this, but my predecessor, correction of her name, is the Honorable Lois Blackett.
Thank you, Councilor.
Alright, thank you. And thank you for that, new city manager. At this point in time, I'd like to take this time opportunity to recognize Bernard Avery on the occasion of his retirement from the close doctor. He has served our community for many, many, many years, and I'd like to ask you, please come forward so I can present you with this recognition. Congratulations. Come on back here, let's get a photo op here. All these illustrious people want to be part of the glamour and glory of the...
Everybody needs to go.
That's exactly right. You make us look worse. Congratulations, thank you for all the years and dollars you put in. Yeah, one of the wonderful things about my job is I get to recognize all kinds of wonderful people for wonderful things. Although he could not be here with us tonight, we've issued a proclamation, or have issued a proclamation, just on behalf of Deacon Foster Jr. on the occasion of his one-hundredth birthday. Now, as many of you know, I think most of my friends will take me under on that, but we're very excited for all the he's done for our community. And I'd like to turn the mic over, if you will, this time to Councilman Knight, to give us a little bit of the history, and I believe that Councilman Black will like to finish up after Mr. Knight says.
We just want to celebrate in homage to Deacon Foster. Deacon Foster's a pillar in this community. He celebrated his hundredth and second birthday. He was a former principal at the Bassaville Elementary School. Also, he's the son of one of the greatest Baptist preachers in eastern North Carolina, the late T. D. Foster. The church was Little Hope, which is now named in honor of his father Foster Memorial Baptist Church. So we just wanted to celebrate him, all the hard work and labor he has put into this community and educating children all across this state, all across this country. And we just want to appreciate Deacon Foster for all his hard work that he has done here in the city of Rocky Mountain.
And we just echo those sentiments across our entire city. It's an honor to be able to be blessed by God to live over a hundred years. That's amazing, isn't it? And so, we're just so thankful. Rocky Mountain has so many people who have passed at hallmark. And although he wasn't able to be here tonight, his family is watching and appreciative of everyone's support and prayers, continued prayers for his health and well-being. And we thank God for not just his legacy, but what is to come forward. Looking for a better future for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Councilman Knight, joiner.
Definitely want to say thank you for Deacon Foster, his pastor, Pastor Perry, and that great congregation happen to be in my ward. And I have had the privilege of serving with them as near my father, the Deacon, and they're with him. And just want to say thank you for recognizing the legend in our community.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, this time we'll move on to petitions to be received from the public. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment. To end, city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. City council values all citizen input, and this is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to city manager or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that signing sheets must be presented to security officer prior to the starting of the meeting, and if you're here, please designate one person to speak on behalf of an organized group. Your comments are in regard to an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. Your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. City council requests you please adhere to the following guidelines: complete a signing sheet, address comments to the council as a whole, not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative and respectful manner. Personal texts which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down after you are removed from the meeting. Please heed comments to three minutes. This time I'd like to invite Damon Hooper.
Yes, sir.
To the podium.
My name is Damon Hooper. I'm here in reference to my children's chickens. I've got some packets. In those packets is actually the websites that we utilized to organize the petition. As of two o'clock today, that petition was nineteen-hundred and thirty-three signatures. As of right now, it's almost twenty-one hundred. It's continuing to go on. These chickens are emotional support for my girls. One of my children is very sick. We've had them for over three years. They just, the eighth, they showed up at our house saying we had to get rid of them. My backyard is literally A-one zone. My coop is five feet away from it. We attempted to talk to the supervisor of animal control to receive a permit because we need qualifications. He denied us that, so we're now trying these steps here. I'm not trying to call this thing, I'm not trying to change anybody's rules. I just want to be able to keep the chickens for my children's emotional support and be able to teach them responsibility and survival abilities later in the future. Anything you, if we could change the origins, there's a lot of people in here just in Rocky Mountain that love developing chickens and their own, you know, themselves. The coop is brand-new, everything in my it's clean, there's nothing dirty, there's no roosters. I'd just like to see my children, you know, to keep their chickens. That's really all I've got to say. And paperwork speech for itself.
Alright, Mr. Daniel will get that to us, we'll all review it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Councilor Joyner.
We had our garden meeting this Saturday, and it appears that there's a lot of citizens in this community that presently have chickens and bees. And a couple of years ago, we decided that we wanted Rocky Mountain to be a model food system. And so, I would hope that in concurrence with that, that we would try to make the necessary adjustments to meet those goals and objectives.
Thank you, Councilor Joyner. Anyone else? This time I'd like to invite Aston Horton to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mister Mayor, Mister City Mayor, congratulations on your appointment. Welcome to Rocky Mountain. My name is Aston Horton, and I'm resident of Berkshire. And on February eighteenth, we invited public, members of the city government, members of city council. The cultural event that we have, we were showcasing the projects that we have completed. The city government staff came, and we have two members from the city council, Mister Harris and Mister Knight. We would like to thank each and every one of you for the support that you have given to the members of the communities of Berkshire. So what we have done, because you didn't contribute well, we have prepared documents and give to every member of them. That is to showcase the things that we have done and what we have planned moving forward. These projects, we won't be able to carry them forward unless we get your continuous support, which is very important for us to work in the community. Which the matter is, we're going to get homes, make it affordable, and help prepare the residents of Rocky Mountain on the community in well-building. So we are preparing all these gold ones. So we have projects there that you gentlemen can look at, and when the time comes, please don't forget us. We need your support. Without your support, whether these projects will go forward. So I do thank you for your time. You have enough time to look over these documents and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to invite this morning manager to the podium.
Good evening. I'm going to be nice, not just because Mister Rogers is his first time, but, you know, we don't want to scare him away. My big thing is, does the city of Rocky Mountain have any dealings with trying to control or do something with fire ends? I have some friends out in Inglewood, and they get fire ends. I mean, they're in town. And you know I live out in the sticks, but let me tell you, Northwest Land Boulevard has got some kilomongous piles. And when they make those big things, you know, you don't want to get near them. And I didn't know if that was a state problem or if Rocky Mountain cities do anything to control those old backers. Also, believe it or not, I want to thank, I know it's got to be the city. I had a couple of fellows out on our media, three and one, north, and they not only were cleaning up my media, so I didn't have to do it. They were so good. And also, I don't know if the police had anything to do with this, but you know where I put my recycling stuff near the line, near Bevano Road? It is so clean. And those stupid people that put those mattresses in there and the garbage, it is so clean. But I would like to ask, am I going to get, are the people in that area, are we going to get another recyclable container? We really need that. And that's all I have to say, believe it or not. And welcome, Mister Rogers.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mister Rogers, I want to let you know as your councilperson, I got an update on Ebony Ivory. I did speak with the owner. He's working on a plan to get it knocked down. So I wanted to let you know, as your councilperson, I did have a conversation with the people at Ebony Ivory, and they're going to work on tearing it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, this time I'd like to invite Reverend Neil Icette to the podium.
Good evening. Take this opportunity to welcome the new city manager. Now, this is truly Mister Rogers' neighbor, so glad to have you. Happy you're with us. Amen. Nine thirty, Sunday School, eleven o'clock, regular service, Mount Zion First Baptist Church. You're welcome. I'm here on pothole patrol tonight at the intersection of Barnes, Martin Luther King, and sixteen-twenty, or sixteen-hundred block of Virginia Street. There's a pothole that has been there for many days, for numerous weeks, for a lot of months. We have called, everybody on the street's been calling, and nobody has come to fix that hole yet. It is full of water, it is tearing up cars. We need to make sure that that pothole is filled. Also, in the sixteen, in the six-hundred block of Park Avenue, there's also an obstruction there that's a pothole that needs to be fixed. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank our police chief for the stupendous job that they are doing in our community, to police the community. Right there at that same corner of Virginia and Barnes, people run that stop sign all the time. And the other day, I saw a kid that was coming from school, I almost get hit there, but now the chief has put some people out that they are watching that corner. There used to be a light there, not a stoplight, but a caution light that would let you know if somebody was coming into the, into the intersection. But I want to thank the chief for that and sending your people out there, very nice, got a chance to talk with them the other day, and they're doing a great job with community policing. And I know that no one's a robot, but we want to make sure that we get it in a timely manner because that hole has been there for months, for many days, for numerous weeks. Okay? Alright, so thank you very much. Continue the good work that you're doing. God bless you and welcome.
Thank you. Finally, I'd like to invite Fox Williams to the podium.
I'll say good evening to the mayor's city council. I wasn't planning to be here tonight, but unfortunately, I made a phone call to Parks and Rec on Friday. After leaving the television show, I went over to Dorchester's community. And there, I found a city of Rocky Mountain vehicle. Now, when I campaigned months ago, Dorchester's wasn't in our city boundaries. So I'm not sure what happened or what's going to happen about this situation. Again, I called the director of Parks and Rec, and had that individual gave me a phone call back, I wouldn't be here tonight. So I would encourage folks to certainly be considerate of citizens in our community. When we do have issues and concerns, that we're thought about, that we are contacted about issues that are of great importance to us as well. I do hope that this city will also support that family who wants to keep their comfort chickens in our community. Certainly, people do need comfort animals and support with all the things that young people are dealing with, the school and etc., just life in general. We don't know what item or what person or what they need, but one thing they don't need is to find themselves in somebody's cemetery or find themselves in somebody's jail. So all that we can do to support our future generations would be greatly appreciated, not just by being assured by everybody in this city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mister Williams. Okay, that brings us to item number ten on our consent agenda. This time, there is a need for clarification, I believe, on the health insurance component, and Mister Rogers, one of our, sorry, Councilor Joyner.
Yeah, thank you so much. I was a little late, but I'd be remiss not to thank Mister Barney and this council and Archie and Mister McGee for supporting the community wealth building that have allowed both Berkshire and other community groups to continue to do what we're doing and helping them to... to continue to do what we're doing and helping them to take those initiatives to be a leader and a builder and a sustainer of their own communities. And I want to thank you for your continued support of community organizations who want to step out there, make an investment in their community, and build it back better themselves. So, just want to thank this council and the city for doing that.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, as indicated, we're in consent agenda. There were some items of need for clarification as related to health insurance contract. We had a special call committee, the whole meeting, on last Monday. So, this time, I'd like to provide the opportunity for Mr. Rogers to provide some clarification on that, and we'll proceed with the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to provide clarity on the items D and E on tonight's consent agenda. We are looking for council's approval of these items. These items relate to the city's health insurance contract. Uh, for clarity, this is a three-year contract, one year with two renewals, and also, the contract document has been updated to provide that the arbitration hearings will be in North Carolina and not in Connecticut.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. I also like to point out on item A, which is Timberlake Street closure, the date is listed as June twenty-third. It was meant to be June twenty-fourth. So, with that said, those clarifications, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent. Uh, Councilman Dalton Cruz made the motion, seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. This item brings us to item number eleven, which is consideration of rescheduling the regularly scheduled city council meeting on April tenth, moving into April third of twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the change? Motion made by Councilman Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harris. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Have no other business, so, beautiful Councilman, I now turn the meeting.